Sign out, Chiro, and sign back in.
Meeting of council to order for Tuesday, June seventeenth. Prove the agenda, please. Council Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. That the June seventeenth, twenty twenty five special meeting of council agenda be adopted as presented.
Seconder. Councilor Hoffman, all in favor? Carried. Delegations Northern Health, Chiro, President and Chief Executive Officer. Kendra, Northeast Senior Operating Officer, and Rebecca, Health Service Administrator for Chatwin and Tumblr Ridge. Invited by council to discuss healthcare updates. Chiro, do you guys have a presentation at all?
Well, it depends what direction you want to take things in. I have, you know, if we get into a health and human resource discussion, I have some slides. But I was thinking more just a conversation to start. You know, again, my apologies. The original intention was for me to be there in person with you all today. And but certainly didn't want to leave everyone hanging around that, even though the board had shifted the travel plans and along with it, mine. So it's still just a pleasure to be here and connect with you and answer any questions you have or where you specifically would like to focus or have more information. And really appreciate Becky and Kendra taking the time to join today as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I do want to thank Kendra and Becky for joining. I know sometimes it's hard to fit in the schedule, but I think it's really important, Chiro, that for sure, I mean, I appreciate Becky there or Kendra there. But Becky, we work so closely with Becky on a mayor's health task force. So I think it's so important that you're, you know, she was able to make it and stuff. So we definitely appreciate that. And same with Kendra. It's important to build that dialogue regionally. So questions from council to start this off. Council Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. Yeah, I'd like to echo the mayor's words for thank you for coming in to speak with us. I can respect that it is a very challenging job to be in healthcare these days, and I'm sure you're all very busy. So one of the things that I do is I sit on the mayor's health task force and health task force with Ms. Borton and other medical professionals in our community. And we try and discuss issues of that I'm hearing from the community. So thank you for your willingness to work with us there. With that, I think one of the biggest concerns from the residents is doctors' wait times. Now, I can appreciate that in other areas of the province, some people don't have a doctor. But it's still one of the issues that is brought up today from residents. And it's still not uncommon for people to have to have a six to eight week window to see their doctors. Can you tell us, is there any, is this on Northern Health's radar? Or is there anything that we are working towards to help bring that down for our residents?
Yeah, that's, so I can assure you that is on my radar. It's something that I'm hearing from a number of different communities for some of our Northern Health owned and operated sites. So we're definitely at a number of health centers. And can let Kendra and Becky speak to anything they want to specifically add in terms of Tumblr Ridge and the Health Center there. But we are doing reflection around how could we do some different process improvement? What's the best kind of capacity capability we can create with the number of providers that we have? We do find, you know, obviously, sometimes when we go through periods where we're not fully staffed, that creates some limitations. But there still is work to be done and that we can do in this area. One new thing that's coming into the mix that really wasn't even in place to the degree that it was even about twelve months ago. And we're going to be looking at active offering of this to many primary care physicians, nurse practitioners, is the use of AI scribes. It's a new, there's been some security and privacy things to work through. But essentially, it's a new augmentation that's happening now in many parts of Canada and North America and most first world countries is it's basically similar to like, you think of ChatGPT, and you might have a conversation with ChatGPT and listening. It's kind of an, it's a device that would listen to your clinical encounter. You'd have to consent to have this, but with consent, have an AI assistant that's listening into the conversation essentially and can then help with charting and management and assessment plan after the encounter. It can really speed up, it can make charting more efficient and speed up the ability of provide, the number of people that a provider can see during a day as well. So we are going to be exploring, you know, what that could potentially do to help and increase capacity in different, for different providers and teams. But it is on the radar, is the short answer, and work to be done. Kendra, Becky, is there anything you'd want to, you'd want to add more locally around this?
Yeah, I can jump in and thank you, Councilor Norbury, for the question. And I think it's a very timely one and a very important one. You and I have had a chance to talk about some of these things through our healthcare task force meeting. But I'll highlight, you know, some of the pieces that sit around this. And our physician group has shared very openly that it's very important to them that, you know, they have the ability to set their schedules. And that includes what their day looks like. So that can impact at times the number of folks that we are able to move through. But at the same time, our providers are very, very strongly committed to wrapping around patients and providing, you know, very robust quality longitudinal care. And that takes time as well. The other piece that can be impactful is when we are seeing provider support in the emergency department. They are then guaranteed, you know, the next day away from services. And that we call that a post-call date. And again, that speaks to provider balance and work-life balance that we've heard very loud and clearly is very important, not only to our physician providers, but to everyone on our team. But then that does mean that, you know, a day in the ER equates to two days outside of clinic. So the math around there can sometimes be complicated. And then the third factor that we've had an opportunity to discuss before is local coverage. When a physician, you know, takes their vacation, which again is something that we fully When a physician, you know, takes their vacation, which again is something that we fully support and encourage them to do, it can be challenging to have locums come back in to, to backfill that vacancy, which will then lead to a longer wait time and period of when they return of folks wanting to, needing to get in to see the provider. I'm happy to take more questions on that, though.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those answers. What, what would be an acceptable wait time that we should, for, for Northern Health, for patients to see a doctor? Like, from your side of the, the table, is, is there an answer there? Like, is, is eight weeks just fine?
No, I don't, I think that's too long. So, you know, I think an ideal for, for me, for, you know, a non-urgent appointment, if we could eventually strive to get down to at least somewhere between two, maybe depending on the severity, four weeks, sort of a two to four week kind of wait. I think we also need to have access to same-day appointments for more urgent emergent cases as well. You know, I think that's the ideal that I would like to see us eventually get towards and, and work through.
Thank you. That's very, I think in an ideal world, that's exactly what I'd be looking for, too. So I appreciate your comments there and, and jumping in because I think that's what our community wants and needs, and I appreciate your, your vision for that, and I hope we can work towards that for the doctor wait time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Julik?
I don't really have any questions. I think for me, I just really want to compliment everybody up there on the screen, joining us today. I, since I've been on council, I've just seen you guys all work so hard and, and respond quickly to questions and queries from us here in Tumbler Ridge. Kendra and Becky, I thought you did amazing at the Let's Talk. You had really thorough answers and answered questions in such a way I got information I didn't know. So it, you know, it, it just really made a lot of sense. I really appreciate all the changes and upgrades at the clinic, the new equipment that's been going in there, the different upgrades that you're doing. Like, it always is really great for staff to, you know, love the building that they're in and, and the medication dispenser and all those different things that have been going in there. I think that's just amazing. I also got to be part of the development of the primary care network here for South Peace and the amount of time that Northern Health staff added to that, to develop that plan and that we were successful in that, and it's, it's really taken off running. I really appreciate that. Like, I think those were some really great things that we've seen from Northern Health. As far as I understand, Northern Health works pretty good with the South Peace Division of Family Practice, which is also that big piece for those wait times and stuff. The communication with the community, going back to the Let's Talk, I felt like it just kind of brought the temperature down in the room when you were able to explain very well what was happening in those things. I like the continued thinking outside the box. Recruitment and retention is brutal for health and education. I see a lot of stuff for you guys on recruitment on Facebook. Once you find the solution for retention, please let me know because I'll pass that on to my colleagues in education. And just the, the willingness to be here again tonight and, and continue to communicate. I think the communication with, with us, so we're able to communicate with our community is just, continues to increase and your presence on social media, the, the pages that I find follow are really great. So people aren't like coming out of the blue, finding things out. You guys are getting ahead of the curve. So just from my point of view, just want to give you guys a great big thank you for all the hard work that you've done with us.
That's great. Actually, that spurred a question for me to you and the rest of council, if I may.
Yep, hundred percent.
How did you find the latest round of infographics that I shared at the North Central Local Government Association? Have those been helpful at all around getting some of the word out about some of the things we've been up to around top issues like mental illness, seniors' care, staffing and, and dealing with retention and recruitment?
Yeah, because it comes up at the, the health task force, so they've been taking it there as well, Chiro.
Okay.
And we're seeing it out there as well, so.
Good.
Councilor Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for showing up tonight. I do appreciate it. So I'm sorry for the question because I know you can't answer it fully. So understanding that you have limitations on immigration, understanding you have limitations on ministry, I think we have a good spot here to start poaching American doctors, nurse practitioners, nurses, nurses and the whole chain. Is there anything that you guys have shareable knowledge that are, is Canada, B.C. working towards that?
Yes, we are. So there's a couple of things. I'm just trying to get my notes on that so I can give you the, the, the correct, the correct answer. But as I'm looking for that, what I can tell you as I'm, as I'm looking for something in particular that I want to share is we are doing some, working with the province to do some expanded marketing in the United States around opportunities to come. And we're also have received permission to, one of, what am I trying to, sorry, just trying to say it simply. As part of Canada and B.C.'s response to the U.S. tariffs, there actually was a ban on public servant travel down to the United States. We actually received an exemption to allow some of our recruiters to go down to some high priority events in the United States as part of that marketing plan so that we can try and snag some would-be Americans or expats, Canadians that are living in the States, to, to come back home. So that's, that, that's been the, that's been, that, so that very much is on the government's, government's radar. Sorry, trying to do two things at once. I'm trying to find the document. We are also, so what I'm trying to find here, so I don't muddle my words, is we've got some work underway to streamline the registration, both for nursing and for physicians. So I might, because I can't find it here at the tip, I might come back to it if I can find it as we go through some other questions. But the short answer is, what, what's happening is there's some work to streamline the registration for both nursing and physicians to be able to expedite their licensure and registration coming from the United States to Canada as well to streamline some of that, taking advantage of, of Americans that might want to come work in Canada. So it is on the radar and there have been some things that have happened to try and take advantage of that and streamline that.
I appreciate that, but the big block is the immigration timeline, not your registration timeline. I was wondering if there's anything on that side.
Yeah, that's a bit out of our hands, yes, and some of the allocations and quotas. I know B.C. is in dialogue with Canada about that.
Okay, no, fair enough. And as I said, I'm fully aware of where you stand on that totem pole and not much you can do other than advocate. I do have one other subject matter, and, okay, thank you. This one, I'm not sure of how much is provincial ministry or you guys. Is there any nice work progress thought on changing the, and I still know there's union aspects of this, the expectations for each, let's call it level? So if we say doctors are on top, nurse practitioner and nurses, and make whatever division, divisions down. We had pharmacists recently be added to the list of what they can do. Is there any looking at rejigging that a bit? The reason I'm asking is I'm looking at prescriptions and waiting two to four weeks for a prescription refill with, for what could be a blood work and fifteen minutes of review and on we go for another three months. I don't find that particularly reasonable nor particularly urgent. So whether it's a nurse practitioner or whatever step in between, rejigging the scale. Because I, I very much appreciate hearing you say appointments are fine, but there is daily need, and we have a lot of those days, too, and I just think that if we rebalance the workloads a little bit, unions aside, that we could get more done in a, in a timely fashion.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there, there, I would say there has been work and expect more in terms of increasing, maximizing scope of practice for different healthcare professionals. So, you know, pharmacists now, and there are a whole host of indications that pharmacists can directly prescribe, renew medications. So, you know, that's a road that is only going to continue and grow. For us as an organization, we have dramatically increased the number of nurse practitioners, and we will continue to be exploring maximizing the scope of those practitioners, including ERs. So we currently have active work underway where we are, have nurse practitioners working in emergency rooms. And a personal vision and goal for me is to see what training we could do, what with, supported by some other clinicians, including potentially advanced care paramedics and virtual supports, could we see a future? I don't think it should be a not-too-distant future where we could actually keep an emergency room open without an in-person physician, but actually with a nurse practitioner and some other healthcare providers. So that's, I'm all in on expanding scope of practice and, and we're actively, where it's within our sphere of influence and control, doing that. We're also really doing that in the nursing family, if you will, with LPNs, really looking at introducing LPNs into emergency room. The Northeast actually led the organization in terms of introduction of LPNs in the surgical environment. So we're going to continue to look at nurse-led or LP, introducing LPN into different settings and practices. And then we're also quite keen on the allied health front to be looking at where we can't have, you know, physiotherapists or social workers, for instance, how could we have social worker assistance, rehab assistance, creating opportunities for entry-level allied health physicians, creating some training, learning plans, allowing people to ladder. So very much agree that that's where we need to go in terms of maximizing scope of practice. So just a few examples of, of where we're going in that direction, and I think lots more to come.
No, that's good. Thank you for that answer. I really appreciate it. Glad to hear that nurse practitioners are part of the plan radar. I just, being in B.C., it seems much more underutilized than a whole lot of other places that I've been, and glad to hear you're on it. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree, and we, we have underutilized it.
All right, Chiro, I've got a couple for you. An update on staff level within the Tumbler Ridge Clinic, as well as staff postings for the Tumbler Ridge Clinic and where those postings are at, like, not where they're located, but have we had anybody apply? Or just, I know there's a couple open, and I would just like to get an update.
Okay, well, I'm going to hope that Becky and Kendra can take the lead on, on that one.
Yeah, I'm happy to give you an update. So in terms of nursing, we have four nursing lines available, that's RN lines within the health center. We do expect to have all of them filled by the end of summer. We have applicants on, on the one remaining line, and we have another RN who we are sponsoring right now, out of community, to do some further emergency department education, and she's returning to us shortly. So really, really good news on, on the nursing front. We are also welcoming an employed student nurse over the next year. So under the employed student nurse program, they can work up to 600 hours. We'll see them throughout the summer, but anticipating some work through the fall as well from them. So exciting in that aspect. In terms of our allied health and diagnostic support, so our lines are, are filled there. We do have one med lab assistant line that's vacant and is posted, and we are using some agency staff to backfill some vacancies at this time. But we did just welcome our, our sponsored CLXT to the, the lab team. So this is week two, I believe, for, for them. So excited to have them onboard and onsite. In terms of our, our PCAs and our receptions, we do have one, one vacancy that is posted right now, and I do anticipate a hire into that line. Some of our, our other areas that we're still looking for support or for additional folks, we will have what we call a CHW or a community health worker. We call it the H cap program, so it's a sponsored education or while you learn program. You'll see that posting come back around, I believe that it will be in the fall, it'll come back up. So we'll be seeking an applicant there to support our community services. And then we do have a 1.0 FTE for a physician vacancy that is posted right now that is outside of my personal wheelhouse, but we can try to speak to that one as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that. The reason I ask that is I'm hearing lately, and I understand that we have a doctors has, you know, taken on roles elsewhere and, and going back and forth. But what I'm hearing locally is some of those patients that were attached to that doctor have now lost their family doctor. When they're calling in, the other doctors that are on site aren't taking any more patients as, on their files. So they're feeling like they have no choice but to go to a merge. Is there another option for these, these folks?
Yeah. I'm happy to speak to that one as well. So an unattached patient, so that would be a patient that does not have a family doctor, they do have access and support through the NH virtual clinic. They also can access our same-day appointments, our walk-in appointments, and we've talked a little bit about that at the healthcare task force meeting and, and how those can be sometimes irregular and it's dependent on the physician on call as to the availability of the same day. In terms of switching to another provider, you can be also put on a waitlist to switch over to, to another provider and, and wait for your name to mark its way up the list. But happy to take more questions on that.
Okay, no, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I, I did explain the virtual clinic and then the walk-in appointments, which, and you, and you mentioned it, Becky, it all depends on what happens in a merge the night before, i- if those walk-in appointments are available. But I just think it's important to get that out there again in regards to that, the virtual clinic for sure, but the walk-in appointments, if the, the physician wasn't busy in a, in a merge the night before. Yeah, I just appreciate that point. I think it's very important to get that out to our residents because there's, there was quite a few patients attached to that doctor, and now they're feeling like they've been moved off to the side and, and not knowing the protocol and how to try and get, you know, obviously a waiting list. I can imagine what the waiting list is with only three doctors working in the facility now, waiting for that 1, 1.0 full-time position to be filled. So I think it's a huge thing when we, you know, it's a small community. We, we have more doctors here now than we did in, in two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. We ran the clinic over there with two doctors. So I think it's really important for people to know that. Thank you for that answer. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kikaka. So I had a question regarding allocation of administrative support for Tumbler Ridge, and this is not a reflection of, of Ms. Borton. I think she's doing, she's doing a great job. But can you, for Chiro, can you tell us like how that decision is made on, on how much attention and, and support Tumbler Ridge gets? Because I do recognize that Ms. Borton's between us and Chatwin. And, you know, we get one day a week and Chatwin seems to get four. So I'm just kind of curious of that decision to, for that allocation. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think what guides a lot of our allocations is our, you know, we try and create a certain amount of equity by service, size of, of service and size of community and try and put in, you know, minimum, try and set some minimum levels of service that we, we want to have in our most rural and remote communities, up to our largest referral centers, either, you know, within an HSDA or, or across the north. So then, you know, in terms of thinking what are the services we want to provide to people, we then try and, and think, you know, and the, the number of clinicians, the size of the clinical team. You know, a jargony term that we'll use in HR is span of control to then look at, you know, the number of clinical leaders, managers that are look at, you know, the number of clinical leaders, managers that are required to support that team, and, 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 you know, then trying with, you know, be as judicious as possible around allocating, having a leadership team, management team that can then, can then support the various teams across, across the North. So I'd say, you know, that's, that's generally, I see Kendra has her hand up, so go for it, Kendra.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to sort of explain a little bit. So Becky actually is the HSA for the Corridor of Care, so she goes all the way from Hudson Hope through to Chetwind to Tumbler Ridge. So she does share her time between three communities, and the size of the sites vary. And we do have, you know, other supports in place for Becky as well. So recently, and I don't mean to take away her thunder, but we did hire another excluded manager to support Becky in the community. So Jason Farquharson is now the Community Services Manager for Chetwind, Tumbler Ridge, and Hudson Hope. So that is another layer of support for Becky to share sort of the load of the work and perhaps pay a little bit more attention to some of those community issues that require it, so that she can leave her site in Chetwind and move around to the two smaller sites and those types of things. So the Corridor of Care has actually been something that's been longstanding and a historical ask from the three communities, because they're so tightly tied together and close. And so that was something that it took, I'm going to say that it took a good eight to 10 years for the decision to be made to combine those three communities for the one HSA, because I don't know if you folks remember, but at one point in time, it was the HSA from Dawson Creek that looked after Chetwind, Tumbler Ridge, and Dawson Creek. And as the communities became bigger and the services became more robust, that's when the division was made. And, you know, we looked at site manager versus HSA and those types of things, and that's where we landed with the Corridor of Care HSA, which is Becky's position.
And I'd say, just for me, in terms of, you know, I'm very much someone that, the way that I see things evolving, that's this challenging, at least decade that we're in here with, with labor constraints and workforce instability, I do see looking at solving problems in more of a Corridor of Care type manner, grouping, how instead of each community being on their own, how to, you create a certain amount of interconnectivity, and to use a tired Prince Rupert type cliche from, from the Northwest, you know, a rising tide lifts all, kind of approach is, is, is I'm, that's something that I'm a big proponent of, and I'll be looking more and more for different issues, problems, to be taking step back from looking at how can it be solved just within a community, but how can groupings of communities come together in a different way to improve business continuity, improve access, and, and the services that we deliver for people and our mission.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's one thing that kind of popped in my mind when you're talking is, you know, we're, it sounds like we're getting more than we used to, but we still want more, you know? And that's, that's kind of how it always is, right? Like, we're always looking for that little more. We're always using comparison to see where, what we're not getting. And you know what, what I'm kind of coming back to is, you know, just being such a small community, we get to, we get to interact with a lot of people in our community, and interact with people from the medical center as well. And you know, some of, some of the concerns that are brought up to me, you know, they're, they bring up operational concerns, which, you know, is not my place to, to get involved with. But my thought would be if we were able to have a little more, you know, boots on the ground, so to speak, to, you know, work through some of these concerns, might help us out. You know, so that's just kind of where I'm coming from. Yeah, I'll take a break in case anyone else wants to ask some questions there.
Counselor, anything else?
Mayor, Kendra does have her hand up.
All right, cool. Sorry, I didn't even look up.
Sorry, just around the medical support for our physicians. So our director, our medical director, Celia Evansen couldn't be here tonight, but she did want me to pass on a few messages. So her portfolio is the whole South piece, and she is committed to working with the physicians in Tumbler Ridge around some of the concerns that they've brought forward to her, and she is going to be starting up some meetings, she'll be coming to visit the community a little bit more often, and those types of things to provide that support to the medical staff as well, which I think is a huge part of it, because she does work well with Becky and myself, and we try to sort of coordinate our services and that type of thing. So just, you know, be on the lookout, because the medical director will be in, in the community a little bit more often as well, supporting the physicians while they recruit, and to try and help retain the people that we do have there providing service.
Thank you for that. Good work. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary. I was hoping to give you guys a little break, because I got some of the tough ones, I apologize. One of the concerns that was brought up to me is conflict resolution, and, you know, with, within Northern, within this area, one of the concerns that was brought up is that there doesn't seem to be a avenue for issues to be brought up, other than to the direct manager. Can you describe the process that, you know, like, so if I was in a larger company, I could go to, say, like, an HR department, and, you know, then those issues could be, could be talked through. Does Northern Health have that opportunity for some, for physicians, for nurses, for administrative staff?
So you're talking different than a patient care quality concern? You're talking about within Northern Health? If a, if a member, a Northern Health employee or a medical staff has a concern with someone, and they're trying to resolve that?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so you're right. The first, the first line layer is to try and encourage people to either work with their direct manager or supervisor, or within the team, to have an environment where they can express concerns and constructively resolve tension. We do offer a number of courses within the organization that would try and build people's confidence and comfort, to have those kind of constructive dialogue, and to, and, and to be able to do that. That being said, appreciate that's not always possible in the case. So, you know, we do have respect in the workplace, policies, processes, procedures that can be supported by HR, again, to, in a more formal and facilitated way, mediated way, bring resolution to, to complaints. We do also, under the Public Disclosure Act, we do have whistleblower safe reporting line as well. So, you know, that could, that would be sort of the most escalated way that if someone sees wrongdoing, feels unsafe to report in any kind of way or fashion, that, that we do have that safe reporting line that can then be used in a way to escalate a worry or concern, and to make sure that it is seriously considered and dealt with appropriately. Kendra, what am I missing?
I think for the physician side of things, there is also, so the respectful workplace policies apply to our medical staff as well, but there is a separate HR department that deals with our medical staff. So when we're dealing with respectful workplace to do with our employees, you know, there's always that aspect of HR and the union with a lot of them. And then with physicians, it's a different HR process that is still within Northern Health, but they, they do deal with their respectful workplace concerns a little bit differently than we do, because there's that extra layer of the college of, or the physician college that they have to also report up to as well. So we do have mechanisms in place, and I think one of the things that we find is the most challenging and things that we're working through is helping, as Cheryl said, to give people the confidence to be able to report those things. So oftentimes, what we'll hear is operations is, you know, I'm just not comfortable to report that, I don't want to be the reason that someone gets in trouble, I don't want to be the reason why someone leaves the community. So oftentimes, it's really difficult for us to get people to come forward and participate in those processes, because these are voluntary processes. We, we don't force people to go through the respectful workplace concern process. If they come to their manager and say, I, I want to act on this, but I don't want to go through that process, then it's a whole other conversation with HR. So there are a few different ways to do it, and it really is about, as Cheryl said, building confidence and, and comfortability with people to be able to come forward and have those conversations.
The, the one other thing that was coming to mind as I was thinking about it, sometimes internally, certain complaints or behaviors can become also part of, we have obligations as an employer to prevent bullying and harassment as under work-safe legislation. So there can be also times where work-safe investigations and processes are brought in to the equation as well, in terms of formally investigating and resolving tension and conflict within a workplace. Not always, but it's another aspect that, that can sometimes come into play in processes that get put in place.
Thank you, I appreciate your responses. You know, because I just, I just look at, you know, we, you know, many of our doctors are going half-time, and I'm just, you know, concerned that there may be something missing there. And like, at the end of the day, you know, sometimes we can't all agree on the direction that we're going, and that's set by yourselves, but as long as we ensure that people are heard, and they're, you know, have everything expressed to them, so in a way they can understand, I think that's, that's very important. Last one I had, Mayor, is, you know, kind of ended up on a positive note, maybe. One of the things I think is important for a community is to try and change the public perception and the public opinion around healthcare professionals, and sometimes it can be pretty negative out there, especially on social media and the public. Do you have any suggestions, pointers, tips on communities that have been successful on, on turning the needle on healthcare appreciation in their communities? Like, any initiatives? Like, we did Walk With Your Doc recently, I think that's a great get your doctors out in the community, because that's something that I'm seeing is kind of almost like its own sort of pandemic of, of underappreciation for healthcare professionals, and I hear it from, I hear it from them themselves, and that it's very hard to work in communities where there's so much negativity. So I was hoping you might have some suggestions for us, since you do see a lot of communities.
Yeah, why don't I give Becky and Kendra first opportunity, and then I can add?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of, one of the great things that Tumbler Ridge has going for it, and, and it's Dr. Helm, so him planning the healthcare conference that's coming up there in July is a real feather in your cap. It is spoken about nationally, about what a great conference it is, and I think when people see that, and the amount of press that it gets out there, you know, in lots of different circles, is something that really, I think, promotes your community, and it promotes the fact that there are several very happy healthcare workers in your community and surrounding area. So I think that that's a really, a really big help. I know that your council, just working with people when we do our, our primary care network stuff, just having you be so positive toward Northern Health and toward the work that we're doing is really helpful. I think when we show a united front, as you've often said, Mayor, and, and the rest of your, your team there on council, when we show a united front, that we have a good partnership, and that we work together really well, I think that your community really sees that, and they appreciate that, and it really does decrease the amount of negativity that we see. I think, you know, globally, there are a few things that people are very upset about that are out of our control, and we can't really do anything about that, but when you're doing the good work that you do, when people are moving into your community, and they're asking you about, oh, I saw this on Facebook, and you sort of, you sort of de-escalate that, I think that that is really important, and, and we really appreciate that. And I think if you can continue that, that is the biggest help that we can get.
Okay, thank you.
I was waiting for Becky to add. Might have been the right answer from Kendra. I have a couple things, staffing levels for this, oh, you want to add?
I don't have anything to add, I think Kendra, I think Kendra nailed, nailed that one, yeah.
Great job by Kendra. Staffing levels for the summer, I know, and work-life balance, and I greatly appreciate hearing work-life balance. I think it was the most important thing that was realized, not by just Northern Health, but healthcare in a province, because when I worked for BCM, that was never talked about, it wasn't out, that's not the reasoning, but we went on with that for years, and I think we've realized it. So with staffing levels for the summer in regards to work-life balance, including Becky for holidays, do we, do we see any gaps coming to Tumbler Ridge? Anything that we need to have, maybe a pulse on, so that if we, there's something we can do, we can, you know, help advocate for you?
Okay, Becky, Kendra, do you want to, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the high level. So we're not forecasting any service interruptions related to nursing throughout the summer. We are well-supplied, of course, we'll be having a new hire join us in August, but outside of that, we also have some very positive and reliable support from our GoHealth team. And so we've had opportunities to highlight that in the past, where we have a number of GoHealth nurses that choose Tumbler Ridge and, and want to see themselves come back to this community and feel really at home here. So, you know, it's, it's that, that well-rounded approach that we have both in our departments and within, you know, your community that is drawing those folks back. So good news on that front, that at this point, I'm not forecasting any SIs related to nursing. I, I would say that there may be some small interruptions related to physician coverage, but there's still some pieces that we're working through around that, and, and as of this time, I have no significant gaps to report.
Okay, thank, and thank you for that, and I know it's, it can change and everything else, and I guess if it does change, if it can just, just get us a heads up, and, you know, I know in the past, we've, we've tried to work with Northern Health to see if we can, whether it's bumping up for, for an agency or whatever it may be, but, or try to assist with locums or whatever when it comes to housing or something like that. The other question, Cheryl, I would have, and it's kind of wide expanded, in my opinion, I heard you loud and clear there at the NCLJ, I haven't reached out or haven't had the opportunity yet to have BCMs come in, so we can have a discussion in regards to transporting of our patients. Still on my radar, I think it's still something that we need to dialogue from this side as well, to see if there's a way of maybe working with BCM, to see if there's a way of getting advanced care paramedics, maybe working in Dawson or such that they can, you know, whether they're the rapid unit that they have down south, that we're looking for the same thing so they can rapidly respond to Tumbler Ridge, and actually backfill that ambulance instead of a nurse going, which obviously puts you guys, could put you guys on the closure. So definitely still working on that. The other thing I'd like to ask all three of you, anything else we can do? Anything we can help with? Any advocacy?
Yeah, I'm going to take advantage, and, because I know Kendra's being run ragged with this one, is measles. Let's talk a little bit about measles. So I don't know if you've heard or, or not, but we, you, you do have, there is an outbreak of measles up north of Fort St. John, and, you know, in Wanawon. So we do have reason to believe at this point that there's highly, a pretty likely chance that we're likely going to have some measles spread now in Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. So what's really important here is we need everyone to do, have some reflection, think about if they've ever been vaccinated or not, for those that are older than 1970, to think back if they've had been, actually been exposed or not, and if they're unsure, then to consider getting vaccinated. We really are in a situation where the vaccination rate overall in the Northeast, in the low 70s, is not going to prevent, it's not enough to have herd immunity and prevent community transmission. So, you know, measles is something we don't think about, mainly because of vaccination. It was thought to have been eradicated in Canada, so we don't really remember what it can do. But it's a very serious disease, and it affects babies and young children the most. And I think none of us want to see anyone unnecessarily get injured, or, you know, God forbid, die from something like this. So it's really is a time for everyone to just... Um, so it's really is a time for everyone to, to just, uh, think about, you know, have they been immunized? If not, to get immunized. Uh, we're ramping up emergency vaccination clinic offerings, uh, for people to, uh, make sure. E- even is, so it is a two-dose series, but even getting that first dose makes a very big difference within days of receiving it. Uh, one, not only for your own protection, but in terms of interruption, interrupting transmission dynamics within the community. So we need everyone to get the word out. Uh, we need everyone to, to, to try and do their part, if they're willing, to, to be vaccinated. Um, we are, um, and then it's also important for people to do their own risk assessment. So obviously, this remains people's choice, whether they're going to get vaccinated or not. I think if you are unvaccinated right now, uh, or your children are unvaccinated, you have to do a very thorough risk assessment, thinking about if you're going to go to any public gathering events. I know it's graduation time. Um, you have to be aware, this is something that is more contagious than COVID. Uh, it, it, it's, it's not a droplet, like, or like with a cold where you sneeze and you get some on your hand and goes on a table and someone touches their eye or their nose. This is airborne, aerosolized in the air, very high attack rate. If you're unimmunized and it's in the air, you're going to catch it. And, um, and so, um, this is a great worry and concern to us. It potentially is going to cause a lot of unnecessary stress and strain on healthcare providers who are going to have to take care of some very sick children, uh, potentially and, um, and needing to be unnecessarily hospitalized. So we're preparing for the worst in that and we're going to do our best, uh, to care for people who are sick. But it would do a lot if everyone could, um, could just do that reflection around if they've been immunized and if they're not, uh, consider, uh, consider doing so. Um, I don't know, Kendra, is there anything that I've missed there that, that you'd want to add? Oh, we lost. Maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, I think along the same lines as what Shiro's talking about.
Thought we lost you. We got you. Go ahead.
Oh, um, I think if, if you can, if you can find it in yourselves to, to talk to the public when they come to you and ask you questions or share the information that's on the Northern Health website about the measles, about when they're going to clinics or when they're trying to go to emergency. Uh, I know that your colleagues, uh, at BCHS are also practicing some of the same, uh, procedures just to make sure that they're, they're taking care of themselves as well. So, you know, word of mouth is huge in a small community like yours. And if you, if you can find it in your, in yourselves to go ahead and promote this for us, that is probably one of the best things that you can do for us because when they hear it from people they trust, they oftentimes will go ahead and, and make some of the decisions based on that. So, um, anything that you can do around promoting the information, the, um, you know, the posts, that would be really, really appreciated.
Okay, um, since we're on the measles topic, on the Northern Health site, there was lots of questions asked about boosters. Um, it was talked about there, how you can go in and get a blood, some blood work done and it can tell you if you're, if you need a booster. Is that being, uh, approached or advertised by Northern Health?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, Mayor, when the indication for the public is around serology. I'm going off my own rusty clinical primary care practice where we mostly go off history, just kind of what people's previous, because, you know, just the, the, the time and the cost to do that and some of the limitations with the serology, but I'm not a hundred percent up to speed. So maybe Kendra, you'd be able to follow up over the course of, um, with, uh, with our public health colleagues and, and we could loop back with you on that, uh, on that, Mayor.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, yeah, and I just, because I've seen it on Northern Health site, I think it was today, I was looking it up and people are asking those kind of questions because obviously everybody is a medical professional that is on your site that's making comments. So that's the scary side, is people are just giving their opinion about boosters and how you can go in and get blood work because they've done it somewhere else. So, you know, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask tonight because there's been no response from Northern Health on that Facebook, uh, post on the procedure or, or that. And I think that's really important to make sure we have the true information out there in regards to, uh, the measles, um, whether they get a booster or whether they go and, and get a vaccination, and obviously up to them. But, um, just so that we have clarity on that, I just want to make sure we're very clear on that. I have some more, but I'm going to go to, um, Counsel Hoffman first.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's on the measles, uh, vein. For those of us who don't remember, is, is it, dangerous is too strong a word. Is it worth the test to see if the, if the protections are still there? Or is it safe for people to just get a booster if it's been?
It's safe to get a booster.
So just save the, the test?
That's what I would do and back, back in the old day when I was a public health nurse, if someone didn't remember, we'd just give them a booster. Yeah.
And just for my ability to not pass on misinformation, is dose one, dose two, booster, all the same shot?
No, dose, well, you have a first dose and then there's a minimum interval for a second one.
Yes.
I'm going off memory, but I think it's around, you have to wait probably at least a month, I would say.
I'm just asking if it's the same dose. If somebody that thinks they've been immunized once upon a time, they're getting the same dose as everybody else. Nobody, there's no need to get yourself confused or twisted in a knot that dosage or, or composition changes over time. It's just measles shot. If you haven't taken one in a long time, go get one. If you're not sure, check your records. Go get one. Go get one. Go get one. All right, thanks.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, the other thing in regards to this, do we have clinic dates for Tumblr Ridge yet?
Becky's going to let you know.
I'm going to jump in on that one. So, yes, we are doing, um, quite a bit of work in the background, um, around all of our public health and vaccination programs in Tumblr Ridge. And, uh, one of our local, uh, nurses will be taking that on here quite shortly. We've been well-supported, um, by other, other entities in our region and, and programs that have been very generous in, in coming in. And, and we're now at a place where we're going to take that on locally and I think we'll see the return on that investment quite quickly in terms of access. So more information to come around those pieces. Um, and I'll also note just for your knowledge that, um, if someone is in community and, and they feel that they are symptomatic and, and are matching the profile, um, you know, what, what could be measles, we would ask that they phone ahead, um, to the facility and we'll arrange, um, for their, their appropriate entrance. It is, um, you know, as Shiro shared, quite easily spreaded. And so we want to take, um, some extra precautions around that and, and have our workers, um, be appropriately, you know, PP'd up and, and, um, have, uh, other members of the public isolated, um, from someone who may have been carrying that. So if you, if you let us know, we will, um, work to get you in and out of the facility and get you what you need.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think that's very important, Becky, we just mentioned. You know, if you do think that you do have the symptoms, that you do definitely advise, whether that's, uh, a merge or whatever before you enter the building, that you're making sure everybody is aware. Whether that's in Tumblr Ridge or, or within the Northeast, I mean, to me, any facility. Uh, it's no different than when, when COVID hit. I mean, to me, we need to make sure our healthcare professionals are, are protected as the best we can do from our side too. So I, I think it's really, really important for anybody that thinks they may have been, uh, or are infected with it, that they make sure, it's better off to be cautious than, than to go in thinking you didn't have it. Okay, one more time, going to ask you if there's anything else we can do. Definitely understand the measles, uh, advocacy and stuff like that. But again, I know where we assist with an apartment. You know, I heard loud and clear at the Keep It Rural Conference, uh, when it came to housing for locums. Um, we're still working on that with some, uh, industry partners, uh, and stuff like that. But anything else that you can see from either one of your sides? Um, like, obviously, I know we have a position advertised for a full-time, uh, doctor. Uh, I'll reach out to the proper channel there, which is Daphne, and see if there's anything we can do and, and, and stuff like that. But prepared for site visits if somebody, um, decides they want to come up and have a look. Anything else that you guys can think of from your side for counsel?
Nothing from me. I'll happy to give Kendra and Becky an opportunity if there's something coming to mind.
Um, no, just again, you know, we really appreciate the partnership and, and we appreciate the positivity that we get every time, um, we have conversations, even sometimes when they're a little bit crusty. We do appreciate the partnership and, and the positivity. And we also appreciate the fact that you understand that we're the whole Northeast. So Tumblr Ridge is part of a very unique area of Northern Health. Um, we have a very large geography. People have to travel really far to get the services that they need. And, um, I think that just as a group of municipalities, you know, between yourselves and Tumblr or Chetwind, Hudson Hope, Dawson Creek, Fort St. John, Fort Nelson, I think the groups that you have and when you go to these bigger events and you advocate for us in the Northeast, um, I just really would appreciate if you continued to do that because even though we have our, our concerns and our challenges, um, your support really means a lot. And it means a lot to the staff to know that you care about them and that you don't just think that they're healthcare workers, they're part of your community. And we really appreciate that because that's what helps keep them in our community. So if you can keep that up, we would appreciate it.
Okay, you got it. Becky, anything from your side? Anything else that you can think of? And I know you get asked that every time at the Health Task Force as well. But again, this is an opportunity, like, you know, thinking out of the box. Uh, you know, we do have some other things planned. We, and Becky, you're well aware of it, and that's the, uh, Medical Professional Dinner. We just haven't moved, you know, again, everybody's schedules are full and that's no excuse, but that will happen again now that COVID is gone. But now we need to make sure from your guys' side that's not a concern with measles. So hopefully that doesn't hold it up in 2025 because it's, it's been held up. Anything else from your side, Becky?
Well, I think we've, we've covered a lot of topics and I, I just so appreciate, you know, the time that we do get to spend and, and the open dialogue. I, I think, you know, your group asks really great questions. Um, and it gives us an opportunity to really dive into, you know, how does healthcare work? And, and what are some of the, um, arenas and, and challenges that we find ourselves in? So thank you for the ongoing dialogue and, and the openness, uh, to support the work that we do.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Um, I think it's same from our side or I mean, a hundred percent believe it. The frank conversations we can have, whether those are the hard conversations at points, i- the information flows back, uh, both directions. And, and I think that's great when we can have that dialogue. It, it's not always the rough questions or the, the rough information. Um, but when we have that and, and there's, there's that, you know, trust going back and forth, I think it makes a huge difference, not only for our community to make sure that they're well taken care of by Northern Health with the healthcare professionals that we have living within our community, but also Northern Health is hearing it loud and clear from all of Northeast that we do have. We all know we have issues and how do we all work together, uh, with those issues to try and make it better for Northeast? I don't think, I care about the province, but this is where I live today. So I, I, we to- totally appreciate that from, from your guys' side. Uh, Ms. Scott, any emailed in questions?
No.
Perfect. Do you guys have anything else to add, Shiro, or anything from your guys' side?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. I know it was virtually. Um, hopefully, uh, as it, uh, the wildfires, uh, come to an end and, and measles maybe sometime in the fall, early winter, we can, uh, see in person besides at, uh, NCLJ or UBCM.
It'll happen. It'll happen. Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Bye.
Uh, take adjournment, please. Counsel Norbury?
That the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting of council be adjourned.
Secondary, Counsel, uh, Julik, just stick around for a minute. Call the question all in favor. Carrie, need counsel to stick around.